Three acres out there in a square mile.
You're live.
We're live. Okay. I think you're correct. All right. So, we are back in session for our ARP workshop. And we're going to have five presenters this evening. This will be our last session, I believe, to hear proposals regarding ARP funding and projects. So, we'll start off this afternoon with Nate Eppink from the Medina County Park District. Nate, you're up.
I appreciate your time and attention and the invitation today. I brought with me Isaac Smith. Isaac is our Planning and Operations Manager, and we will tag-team on both of these. You know we had two different submissions. I have listened to many of the presentations over the last two days, and I don't envy the three of you at all. There are a lot of good projects out there, but hopefully we've saved some really good ones for the end as well. So, for your benefit, as well as those folks who are watching online, I wanted to start with just a really brief summary or overview of the park district because we've been growing at a pretty good rate over the last few years. We're at 7,200 acres and growing. We have 18 different open parks, preserves, and multipurpose trails. And everything that we do from day-to-day to capital projects, we do with fewer than 35 employees. We're, of course, funded by a local real estate tax that property owners pay into, with the exception of the folks in Hinckley, because they pay into Cleveland Metro Parks. As far as conservation goes and the growth rate, we have preserved 490 acres since 2019. We have 276 acres under contract in different parts of the county, and, I'm sorry, 247, and we'll soon have another 276 acres under contract. We're generally going after what we call the resource-rich properties, the swamps that developers don't want, or woods that have, you know, some topography challenges for other uses, but also land that is able to make connections between parks and community assets. And then we're also looking at land in communities that we don't currently serve with an open presence. One of them is Wadsworth, and there's some different townships as well. So, that's been our focus over the last couple of years. Isaac and I are both, we're, I've been told if you haven't lived in Medina County for 40 years, you're new to Medina County. That certainly is true of both of us. I've been with the park district a little over three years now. Isaac is closing in on two years with Medina County Park District. We have some pretty significant projects right now. Two of them we'll touch on as part of these projects, the nominations. One is Chippewa Lake, the master plan in our H2 Ohio restoration efforts. Those will be huge for water quality, but we can make additional improvements there to affect the quality of the lake. We're working on a new nature preserve in Sharon Township, a new nature preserve in Litchfield, and really kudos to the city of Brunswick. They're taking the lead on the Plum Creek Greenway, which will connect Brunswick Lake with Plum Creek Park in just a few years. The first two of three phases, the first two phases are funded entirely, and we're looking at that third phase to go from Laurel Road to Brunswick Lake Park. But really, really good stuff. The Chippewa Lake project that we submitted, I would also classify as really good stuff. Just a brief summary, as part of our master plan, you know, we want smart growth out there that is a benefit to residents as well as the lake and the infrastructure. So, currently, the sanitary engineer's office, there's a number of sewer and water lines that flow through the property. It's not paved, there's a lot of old asphalt from the amusement park, but the maintenance path is mowed. It's not paved at all. And what we proposed here is to pave that maintenance path between Euclid Avenue and Gloria Glenn's to build it up to a higher spec than we would for a trail, because we want it to accommodate heavy equipment.
Question.
Yes.
So, Nate, we don't have a map of the, so the only map that I saw, and I looked at this, is it in there?
You got the wrong one. You got the wrong one. You got the Brunswick or the other.
See, my cover page threw you for a loop.
Yeah, all right. Okay, there we are.
So...
I thought I looked at this online, but it was on my phone.
Okay. Yep. So, the proposed maintenance drives and ADA trails, that label, going north to south between Euclid Avenue and Gloria Glenn's, we propose to pave that section for maintenance purposes by the sanitary engineer's office. When it's not being used for maintenance purposes, it would double as a bike trail, a community connector. The other important thing here is that it would not only accommodate the heavy equipment of the sanitary engineer's office, but as you all know, there are two bridges down there in Euclid Avenue. One of them will be replaced thanks to the critical infrastructure grant that you have. The other bridge is still privately owned.
Where's the other bridge relative to the one replacing?
It's beyond it. It's closer to the water, but there's another smaller bridge back there. That cannot accommodate EMS or fire.
Is that on Euclid going to the straight, because you make...
You make an immediate...
You go over the bridge, you make an immediate left.
And if you turn left...
Again.
Again, it's right there. And this construction here, building that trail to a much higher spec, would assist first responders as well, serving those in Euclid Avenue. Park development, we would take that into consideration to not put any impediments between, you know, the main drive or the entrance and that connection. The other part of this project, which is really significant, beyond just the maintenance for the existing sewer and water lines, is the addition of an equalization tank. That would hold half a million gallons of both water and sewage, prevent it from falling or flowing into the lake. And you know, we have harmful algal bloom issues. We've had a good 18 to 24 months, but the problem hasn't been solved. We also have, most recently, we have issues with E. coli. So, this could help to put a damper on that problem and certainly slow down the flow of water, which, you know, the flooding creates a lot of trouble down there. So, that EQ tank would be above ground. I've talked with Jeremy Cinco about the specs, and that is a significant portion of this project as well. As for the public benefit, you know, I mentioned the E. coli and the harmful algal blooms. This project could assist us in that regard. The trail, of course, would be open to everyone. Our parks are open 6:00 a.m. to dark, which is defined as one hour past sunset. We have a pretty aggressive timeframe with all the restoration we intend to do. The new main drive and the bridge that you all are funding with the grant, that has to be completed by March of '23. We have until December of '23 to complete our restoration work through H2 Ohio. I have said in multiple settings, and now it's online here, that we want to have some public access there, some sort of public access by 2025. So, pretty soon here, we want to get the ball rolling. People will see the earth move next year when we start moving soil and cleaning up the old amusement park. As a district, we don't do a great job of tracking visitation. It's one of the things that I think probably we have the most area for improvement, but if you look at other neighboring park districts, and this speaks to public impact or public benefit, looking at their visitation and their population compared to ours, I think a conservative estimate for visitors last year is around 2 million. We have, again, 18 parks and preserves and trails, and there's always somebody in the parks. So, this would be available to everyone who would not only serve the communities there, but as Chippewa Lake grows and is developed, it will become the crown jewel of the park district, and will have a lot of eyes on it and attract a lot of users as well. And yeah, lastly, I think that would easily, this trail would have tens of thousands of users on it in a year, plus the added benefit of assisting first responders in the sanitary engineer's office. I'm going to turn things over to Isaac to finish out the Chippewa Lake portion, and then, of course, we can answer any questions before we jump to project number two.
Good afternoon. So, my portion of this is to talk about the maintenance and the planning portion of kind of what we have, what we're looking at with this. And a big component of this is that the park district will be maintaining the asphalt trail that we're proposing with this. Generally speaking, an asphalt trail can last up to 20 years with proper maintenance and also limiting, you know, the use to the management and maintenance vehicles for both the park district and also for the sanitary engineers as we're proposing this. The trail also will be patrolled by our law enforcement rangers, so we'll be providing the law enforcement and watching over everything down there as it relates to our development with Chippewa Lake. It will also benefit because the equalization tank and all the sewer infrastructure is in proximity to that, our law enforcement will have the eyes down there. We'll also be, you know, taking a look at, you know, sharing the expenditures for the big capital improvements and changes when it look for anything that is necessary with this, and that's part of what Nate laid out with the attachment with the agreement with Brunswick, for Brunswick Lake, just making sure we're sharing and working in partnership and conjunction with the sanitary engineer as far as any major capital expenditures for if something needs to be replaced or affected with release to the maintenance drives there.
Can I ask a question there?
Sure.
So, who is actually going to own the tank? Is it going to be the park district that owns it, and the sanitary engineer will essentially use it and maintain it? Is that the concept?
That's a great question. The ownership of the tank, the county, the commissioners, you own a parcel down there.
Right.
But I don't know if it's enough real estate to accommodate this equalization tank. So, we could offer an easement to the county for the placement and management of the EQ tank. I would prefer not to have the park district own it, but for the sanitary engineer's office to own that tank. But certainly, if there's real estate, if you need some additional land to place that, to construct it and maintain it, we'd be happy to offer that up.
So, could you speak to the need of the equalization tank? I mean, that's kind of paramount here, and maybe that's where Amy and where, Jeremy, obviously, we've talked about maybe technical issues. So, speak to the need for this equalization tank.
Well, there's, you know, there's a lot of water issues down in Chippewa Lake. The streams that feed into it, particularly on the east side, that flow through Euclid Avenue, there's a little creek, an unnamed creek down there. During a normal storm event, that's a really rapid high flow. During the significant storm events, it's like a fire hose, and the EQ tank would hold back some of that storm water until it can be processed by the lift station. But we're also building wetlands, so this is kind of a two-pronged approach. Our wetlands will withhold some of the storm water, slow it down, and filter out nutrients, but the EQ tank would complement those efforts too.
That's why I was confused, because usually our equalization tanks have been, basically served the sanitary system because of combined sewers, old sewers, and all that kind of stuff. So, you're really talking about a stormwater equalization tank?
Well, no. It's to withhold both.
Because of the sewers down there?
It would be connected to the Euclid pump station, which is a sanitary lift station.
Got it.
But Jeremy had referenced yesterday how during wet weather and seasonal high groundwater...
Right.
There's a lot of clean water that gets into the sanitary sewer.
Right, infiltration and so forth. Yes, right.
Inflow in some instances. So, this would hold that water that's overwhelming the sanitary lift station until such time it could bleed it back into the sanitary system for treatment at the plant, this water treatment plant.
Okay.
What is the source of the water? Is the water coming from the sewer system, or is the water coming from the creek?
Primarily from the sewer system. So, you've got really old sewers down there. That original plant was built, I think, in the 1920s.
You're talking about the Chippewa plant?
Chippewa Lake, Gloria Glenn's, old six-inch diameter clay tile, joints every two feet that are not very watertight.
Right, infiltration coming in from there.
So, in years past, we've monitored groundwater levels respective to the lake levels. As the lake rises, the groundwater rises. We draw more water into the sewer and then have to manage it as part of the sanitary collection system.
Okay.
So, is a half a million gallons significant? I mean, it's, anytime I've seen Chippewa Lake get high, and Chippewa Lake is, how many acres?
It's over 300 acres.
375 or something like that?
Closer to 330.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, an acre foot is a lot of water.
Mm-hmm.
And the flow monitoring, and this will involve more discussion with Jeremy, but the flow monitoring done years ago would suggest that size would be a good size to accommodate the wet weather flows that get into the sanitary system.
We've done a lot of, I mean, over the years, Becky's tried to do a lot more replacement of those older systems and also lining and whatever else we did to stop that infiltration, but you've not been able to completely halt it.
Correct, just based on the number of, you know, feet miles and so forth of sewer down there that has not yet been replaced or rehabilitated.
In a perfect world, we would have had a closed system, but we don't. So, therefore, we need an equalization tank because of the impact on the exterior, well, the lake and the other environment because of our high seasonal water.
And the ability to hold this wastewater back would benefit what Jeremy had described yesterday, those wet weather overflows that occasionally happen, because this lift station can push it to the plant.
Right.
But we can't get enough through the plant. That's where it's problematic. So, if we can hold some back and allow it to feed in when capacity is available, it would benefit the system.
Okay.
Thanks, Amy. Glad you're here. Our H2 Ohio project, we do intend to build about 20 acres of wetlands there on the amusement park site, so that will do a lot to withhold some water during these large rain events as well.
So, Nate, another question regarding H2 Ohio. Are there funds available for this tank?
No. No, H2 Ohio is solely for water quality but specific to wetlands through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The Department of Ag is working with farmers, and the EPA has some funding available too, but for our purposes, H2 Ohio is exclusive to wetland creation and restoration.
So, just, there are no other funds available for this type of project as we sit here today?
For us, certainly. I mean, yes, we can tap into funds for trail building, but this trail is over and above what we would build normally, but it would accommodate heavy equipment and service vehicles. The EQ tank is certainly out of our realm.
But if we need to buy, build an EQ tank, and we have insufficient land, we would then work to with the park district to lease or have the appropriate portion, depending on engineering, I guess, as to where that tank would be located.
Right.
Okay. Got it.
Any reason why you put them together, the trail and the EQ tank, or can you not do the EQ tank without the trail?
They could be separated, but because they're both in the same service area, and we're doing so much in Chippewa Lake, that's why we lumped this together. Our separate project, I mean, you could certainly choose to fund one or the other or both, wink, wink, but, you know, the reason we kept Wolf Creek separate is because that's a completely different project and a completely different area.
Right. I was just wondering if you knew a rough estimate of the percentage of the equalization tank versus the trail?
Well, the EQ tank is $500,000 of that 922 that was submitted.
Thank you.
Isaac ran some numbers. Would you speak to the overbuild, essentially?
So, we designed this or ran our budget estimate based on constructing the path in a manner that could support the service vehicles, so it's a little bit wider than our standard 10-foot-wide asphalt path. It's also, the subbase construction is much more firm and basically constructed more excavation deeper. So, that was part of what we put into our cost estimate. So, kind of, I believe to answer your question, it's almost an even split with the trail being about 400 and, no.
22,000.
420, yeah.
Yeah, so that's generally where, like, the split is on that.
Okay.
That is about, Isaac factored this out for me today, that trail portion is between $75,000 and $100,000 more than we would otherwise spend on a trail of that length, that size.
I don't know if it is in here or not, but how long is the trail? How many linear feet or...
It's just under a mile and a quarter when we look at all the trails that we're looking at here. So, that's what we based all of our estimates and everything on. And we're still working through our final master plan for the site. We've gone through a round of public meetings and public comment, and we put out an online survey. Our consultant is putting together some general site master plans for us for review that we're going to be reviewing with our stakeholders at the end of the week, this week, and then we'll also be taking that out to the public in the end of September for an additional public meeting to get comment on that. So, a lot of those trail alignments that we have on here are very preliminary, but generally speaking, that's what we think is where the best place to put the trails, and it's also where it aligns with the existing sewer and water utilities that are on site that we initially analyzed as the best places to put trails, because they're already disturbed. They have to be kept open anyways.
Speaking of public comment, has this, have you had any discussion with the council or mayor of Chippewa Lake about the tank itself and just the fact that it could be there and the size and et cetera?
Not specific to the tank. I did, for Lafayette Township trustees, Mayor Gloria Glenn's and Mayor of Chippewa Lake, talked to them back in May before we submitted this project and shared with them what it would include, but I did not get into the actual specs or where it might be placed.
Okay. Because a 25-foot-tall, 62-foot-diameter tank is...
Considering some of the water issues that Chippewa has had, any improvement?
I just think it would be nice to...
Paint it green.
Put a mural on it.
Yes, okay.
Now, the reason you included the agreement with Brunswick is just as an example of the kind of agreement you would desire for the maintenance with the town.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Got it. All right. Any other questions about Chippewa, or we can, okay.
Let's move on.
In the interest of time. Okay. I'll start off with Wolf Creek and then hand it over to Isaac again. This, too, is a project that has two separate components, one of which is trail construction. This package that you received today does include some photographs. They are black and white, but you can see the existing maintenance path looks almost like a creek at times of the year. It's very rutted when the sanitary engineer's office or their contractors have to go back there. I want to say, Amy, you've told me that equipment's been stuck before, so it's in really rough shape. So, the two-part here is, one, to pave that trail, again, built up to a greater spec than we would need for a hike and bike trail, but this could accommodate heavy equipment and service vehicles between, we're talking between State Route 94 and State Road in Sharon Township. The other part of this proposal is a little bit of stream restoration that benefits people even beyond Medina County. One, that stream restoration would protect the integrity of the existing sewer. That area is very wet, and at times that trail can be, or that path can be underwater. So, we want to build some linear wetlands, increase the size of the floodplain to hold water and slow it down, but the added benefit there is the Wolf Creek eventually flows into Barberton Reservoir, which is the drinking water source for the city of Barberton. So, it impacts us here as well as those folks downstream. And again, this would be a great collaboration with another public entity and certainly speak to infrastructure and water quality. The public benefit is similar here. The trail would be open to everyone during regular park hours. You know, I was looking a little bit at the 2020 census results the other day, and just in Sharon Township and Wadsworth alone, there's 30,000 residents who live very close to this and could use this trail regularly. If you factor in Montville and Granger and others, there's a lot of people who would really enjoy using this trail, connecting, if we worked with ODOT, to connect to the ball fields across the street, the township park. This trail is a part of or immediately south of what we consider the Sharon Nature Preserve. That's the one new preserve in Sharon that I alluded to. We'll go out to bid on that project very soon and start moving the dirt around after the new year. So, that nature preserve has a wetland component, but also then, you know, gravel trails, natural surface trails, but to have a bike trail in that vicinity would be outstanding. to have a bike trail in that vicinity would be outstanding. And, you know, it goes without saying too, the opportunities to connect community assets as well as green space in the eastern part of the county will become increasingly harder in the coming years with all the development we're experiencing out there. So with more people, I think there's a greater demand for parks and attractions like this. And so it not only serves the sanitary engineer's office, but also our public.
Just to touch on much of the same as the last one, the Park District would be maintaining the trail. They'd be responsible for the management and ongoing maintenance, you know, last 20 years appropriately maintained and doing the ranger patrol. It's also a great opportunity, as Nate mentioned, this is an area of rapid development. There's a lot of, you know, new home divisions going in there and it'll address some of the area issues. You know, there's flooding concerns out there and things of that sort. So this would be a great opportunity for a partnership between two publicly funded agencies with the sanitary engineers and the Park District to address some of these issues and create some great trail connectivity in the process.
Isaac, same question as on the other one. Do you have a breakdown between the cost of the trail and the cost of the restoration of the creek?
Do we have that broken down in our cost estimation?
Yeah. So our stream restoration in the original submission, we estimated at about a quarter of a million, 250 of the 400-plus that was submitted.
It was 570.
I'm sorry, 578. Yeah, we'll round up to 570. So it was a portion of that. But, you know, Sharon Township, businesses along 94 there, and I know with State Road, that's been underwater at times. So anything that we could do to increase floodplain and storage, we won't solve the problem, but it would be an advantage.
Maybe some.
Okay. You're not going to like this question, and I'm going to assume I know the answer just based on price alone. If you had to rank these two projects between order of priority for you, how are they ranked?
Well, full disclosure, I'm a Sharon resident.
Okay.
So I do love the idea of a bike trail nearby.
Okay.
It's really hard to choose. I mean, I think I would rank them, Chippewa first, Wolf Creek second, because the Wolf Creek project is great, but it's less expensive. We could probably tackle that in chunks over the next few years. The Chippewa project, if that were to be the only one funded, it would dovetail really nicely with the other work that's happening, would help us have some kind of public access feature, amenity sooner than later. But it also will improve water quality in an area. I've talked to Scott recently about sustainability and the water quality out there. This would go a long way to helping alleviate some of the issues we have there. So if I have to choose, it's Chippewa first.
Thank you. You weren't the only one I may choose.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Nate.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next on our list is Sheriff Grace. I see he's not here, so let's move on. We'll just skip him. You guys don't have to stay unless you really want to. You're Morgan, welcome to stay or you're.
I'll just arrest the sheriff.
That'd be fun.
I'm okay with that.
Hey, are you going to try to?
Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Greetings.
Hello.
Thank you. This, of course, is Sheriff Grace.
Thank you.
So as we, what we did is we went ahead and modified our original application. We understand that the need, there's a lot of needs in the county. I think our first one that we submitted to Amy, I think we asked for between 10 and 11 million for jail expansion. Obviously, there's a lot of excellent projects here, the parks and other departments. So
what we did on this one is we went ahead and modified that request to basically transfer it into a 40-bed expansion for mental health, drug addiction wing. The benefit to that is obviously we're serving that population within the facility, which there is a true need for. Secondly, then it'll also create 40 openings in general population. It's not the 120 that we obviously initially asked for or requested, but it certainly is a benefit. The initial stats that we had, obviously in 2019 through March of 2020, the daily population average was 107, no, 279. And obviously, as we all know, the capacity's 256. So that will help that issue. Obviously, it won't address it fully, but as we all know, during COVID, mental health issues certainly rose along with drug addiction. So we'll be able to serve that. Currently, right now, we serve that group, but it's throughout the entire jail. So we're having to move inmates throughout different classrooms. This way, if we do it, we can be consistent, have them there, and also create office spaces for our team members from alternative paths. So you can see down there, I put life cycles, 50-plus years at least.
Where's the new cost?
It's down in here. Well, did we forget that? And that's my fault, though. Rebecca did a fantastic job with this. We estimated that based on the cost that the state provided us was $125,000 per bed. So that comes out to $5 million versus we were between 10 and 11 million before. Obviously, that's a rough estimate. If we ever get to this position, there's a lot of collaboration that we would like to do, right? Speak with the Adam Board, speak with our mental health providers and get everyone in a room and really, and the judges, truthfully, and get everyone in a room to really figure out the best way to tackle that and design that.
So then, once it was built, you'd need an extra half mil?
For the staffing. And that staffing, obviously, we have food costs in there. Right now, it's .96 a meal, but that fluctuates based on the daily population. So that came out to roughly, for 40 inmates a year, I think it was roughly $47,000. And obviously, we know there's utility costs and such in there as well. But the real, again, the real benefit in there is to really provide the services to those inmates to hopefully lower that recidivism, provide the services so they're not coming back, they're not reoffending. And we're providing that to better themselves as individuals, but then the entire county as a whole benefits from that. I think we covered, what else is in here? I think we covered all the numbers there. But again, you know, obviously, full disclosure, we know that the 120-bed was what was initially requested, but we cut that. We did apply for, I think we all know, for the state grant for that expansion. That grant was $50 million. Our request was, I believe, I think it was 10 million. The state received over 400,000, 400 million in request, and obviously only 50 million allocated. There is a pending bill that has not been, I don't believe it's been introduced to create permanent funding, similar to what they do for the schools. So full disclosure, that is a possibility. We just had a meeting yesterday. As of now, it hasn't gone anywhere right now.
I think it's been introduced, the one with Jason Stevens is the main sponsor. He's talked with the CCAO, Port Trustees, Commissioners Association about this.
And Commissioner Hammond, you might know, I don't know how much they were trying to allocate per year out of that. Someone had said 200 million, but I don't know.
I think they're still negotiating.
Yeah. Which would obviously be very helpful. And there's, obviously, this tackles a need, but there would certainly be other needs as well. Any questions on that? And then the other thing we did leave in there, the other project was the, its expansion slash new EOC off the front. So when you pull into the sheriff's office, would it be to the north of the parking lot by the detective bureau area, an EOC in that vicinity? Obviously, it would serve as an EOC, but it will also serve as a community room, training room, and the ability to obviously administer vaccines or booster vaccines as well. We also included that as a 50-year life cycle.
And what was the price on that?
That is roughly $2 million. And that was, should have been in our, yeah, that was in our first request. Again.
The 2 million is on here.
These are obviously estimates based on square footage. That was 1,500 square foot roughly. Not only does it do the vaccine, but then obviously for this or any other situation, it would turn into the EOC. Multiple phone lines come in there. Currently, the EOC, as you know, is right off dispatch. The size is not adequate for a real operation. And the phone lines currently, they're coming from the ceiling. And I believe it's only eight phone lines are capable of coming in there. For instance, you may have all received that alert in the middle of night, the Amber Alert. But if we, knock on wood, but if we had an Amber Alert, that system would be flooded. Eight phone lines would just wouldn't be adequate. That also, then, we could open it up to not only the sheriff's office, but any county first responder, fire, EMA. It would be utilized by everyone. It would have the technology, radios, availability, and more so the telephones.
You said it's 1,500 square feet. When EMA completely moves out of that area, how many square feet are you getting from when they move out?
Good question. I don't know the square footage in their office. The question we would have to add, ask is they have that solid, I guess it's a block wall in between the two. So that could be a question for Stephen, if there's any structural capacity there, if that wall was eliminated.
I just was wondering how many square foot you're gaining from that.
Yeah. Valid, valid question. And then the last one, we just combined because it covers the radio system. We discussed this before I arrived here in January at the sheriff's office about an additional tower in Seville. That's an unserved area for sure. They have poor radio coverage down there because it sits basically in a bowl. That, along with the upgraded consoles within dispatch, there's five currently. And then the other, we researched, Scott has been very helpful, and Stephen, with the cameras for the upgrade in the jail. We have talked to some, not the prosecutor's office, a different legal advisor, that they're suggesting that you could use this funds for the cameras. I know Scott brought up maybe using them. We have some of that money from a different grant, but obviously, if we could use it here, that would obviously reallocate the funds that we had for that for a different project. So those all together, combined to roughly, for the cameras, and that would be roughly 700,000. That's the cameras, the tower, and then the consoles. The consoles are roughly 100.
The cameras aren't on here or?
No. They're on the one we just handed you.
Oh, okay.
On the back. It should be looped in with this number three, right?
Okay. No, it's not.
It does say in camera, camera system for jail, but.
No money. Yeah. So it's 200,000 for cameras and 500,000 for the tower.
It's, the tower itself is roughly a little less than 400,000. The consoles are 110.
Okay. So the third, the number three is?
Roughly 700,000.
Okay.
And then we took off, sorry, go ahead.
Terry, there is no connection between the camera upgrade and the tower.
Correct. We just lumped those as equipment.
Those are two different projects.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Amy, I have a question for you. Are we able to use the ARP funds for in addition to the jail?
We had this conversation, Sheriff and I, about spreading out populations so that you were.
Social distancing?
For social distancing for your population. I think we'd have to just read it again with a finer look to understand applicability.
Okay. If I could add there, so I also called the state today, Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections, to ask that question. They felt it was inappropriate. I called Senator Portman's office, ran that by them. Obviously, the same situation. We did include page numbers on the first outline that I gave Amy. And that's why we changed it to mental health and addiction, because this really hits home on that project, where the first one, where it was just a general expansion, probably didn't. That's why we're really focusing in on that.
If you had to prioritize your three projects, how would you prioritize them?
The same way I presented them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So then I have the same question on, I guess you could use probably the same argument on the EOC community room.
Correct. And for the vaccine distribution to that and the communication.
So, but what about the radio tower?
Broadband and on that page that I indicated does say communication.
That's lumped into the broadband category?
That's what I'm understanding, but I don't want to give you 100%. That's what I'm hearing through our association, the BSSA.
Okay.
And the communication, unserved, and that area certainly is, as we know, has brought this dead spots up through that valley. And I think the initial quote, and that's what we're still using, last year, yeah, 2020, I think that was still a high quote, was roughly 400,000.
I would say it was just over 40.
Okay.
Camera system for jail. What category would that be, Amy?
I don't recall. I'll look back at the pages that Sheriff referenced to, if I can remember.
The camera system, correct, if I'm wrong, but I think the cameras came in at 260. And you had 140?
Forty, 140.
And then we were going to make up the difference through another source.
Correct.
Or 100 or something.
Right. We had three grants that we were bringing to the table on that one.
So how much would those three grants cover of the 200,000?
We have 140.
We have 140. We're going to make up a difference with just 100.
Oh, so the ask for us from ARP is only 60 then? Is that correct?
Yeah. That's the max. I guess my question is, I don't know then, if you would then take that other 100,000 and use it for the consoles, or are you just going to use these funds? You see what I'm saying? Does this make sense or not really?
Well, you have other grants available for the 200,000 camera system upgrade.
We are, we have 140,000 for that project. Scott, and along with you, the board, is going to make up the 120.
No, I guess that's a question. Is the total price 200, or do you need an additional 200 from ARP?
Oh, no. The total price is 266 was the version that.
266 minus 140, so that number for ARP purposes should be 120-ish, not 200?
Right.
Okay.
Roughly, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll say thank you to Rebecca for all her hard work on this.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay. Yeah, we had good, Philip and I talked from the Adam Board, good dialogue. Just again, just, it's so hard right now because obviously, you know, these are long-term projects. So in order to really.
Well, the mental health aspect most definitely fits better than a jail as far as these specific funds.
I agree. And I also can appreciate that was a larger ask, right? I think it was 11 million and that's why.
Well, it didn't matter how big the ask is if it didn't fit in one of the parameters. So this is a better fit in the parameters.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, I agree. And that still helps out, these other worthwhile projects here.
All right.
All right?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, you're up.
Good afternoon, Ed.
How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
I'm well. I have a brief and a one-pager. So there's a one-pager and a brief, one-pager and a brief. You can pass those down.
One, two.
One-pager and a brief, and I assume Rhonda gets one?
We're handing them down.
We're handing it now.
Thank you, sir.
Probably wants one.
Do you have an extra one? Yep.
I've got six. Rhonda said six. I follow instructions pretty well. Used to take it orders.
[laughing]
So first, I just want to start off saying I've been watching these and it's fascinating. I would, you know, I just, I learned something every time I watch one of your guys' meetings, dealing with pipelines and water and all that's crazy. So I like the little world I live in. So I'm here to talk a little bit about expanding our footprint as the Medina County Veteran Service Office into more of a resource center and why that is needed here throughout the county. I want to say that I am not an architect. I am not a builder. You guys probably know more about funding that stuff and what it costs to build. know more about funding that stuff and what it costs to build something than I do. So the estimates I got, I talked to Stephen a little bit, originally talked to Scott, and then I talked to the State of Ohio on what construction costs are, and we came up with an estimate. So hopefully it's fairly accurate. The current facility we have is wonderful. It was built in around, I think, 2000. So it's fairly new, probably the newest building in the county. But it is, the capacity of what we're doing there, and what we have the capability to do, is limited at this point, just based on space and how many people I can fit in the building. We did update the facility in 2014, had a small construction project where we quartered off the waiting room and added some, you know, reception area kind of inside. We didn't add to the building, just restructured inside. And we did that mostly in order to flow the operations, kind of like a management of people, because before we just had people coming in, and we had like a, it was almost like a bar set up there. We could just, Steve probably remembers, you could just walk in, and you could hear everybody. And there was, you know, there was HIPAA regulations that we weren't really following, because you could hear everything throughout the building. So we were able to separate that off, and that worked for some time. And now we've just reached the point where, you know, we think we could be doing more, but we need the space to do that. The recommended expansion would be to subdivide the current boardroom into another office for another county veteran service officer and a counselor that could do things. You know, the sheriff mentioned recidivism. I sat on the board at NACO for, with the National Association of Sheriffs, and we talked a lot about veterans and recidivism and them going back into the jail. And now here in the county, with the city court opening up with the Valor Court, and I'm sure that the county will follow in the next couple of years, it just, it builds on what we can be doing to help our veterans. So that's one piece of it, is just to divide that room up. The second piece would be to build a new multifunctional, kind of like a community room, which would double as a boardroom, but could also be used, right now, our current boardroom is just space where we can have our board meeting and barely fit anybody that comes to, you know, if we get five people in there, it's packed. So that becomes a problem. We'd like to build a community room that the community could actually use to do, we could do briefings, we could do, you know, the shots in there, we could do medical briefings, we can do benefit briefings. Veterans could come in there. We've had issues with homelessness veterans that are passing through and, you know, maybe need a bite to eat, maybe need a shower, just basic hygiene type things that we could put them in and contain them. And, you know, I mean, the prospects for a room like that are endless. But it would, it would serve more of a community room than just a boardroom for our board to meet. But it would double as that accordingly. The next piece of it would be a garage. We currently have a one-car garage, or one-van garage, whatever you want to call it, that is packed with stuff, because there is no storage in the building as we speak. There's, the only storage space is a little laundry closet that's got a, kind of like a spigot for the cleaning person, and that's about it. So we use the garage for storage, and there's no way we could fit a van in there. We currently have four vans. We expect that number to go down to three. We got the one from Medina County Transit to provide wheelchair access, to see if it services, and we are using it. So the next van we purchased, we'll get rid of two vans, and we'll purchase one that is a wheelchair van. So that's really paid off. We were able to get that at no cost. But the problem with the garage and not having one is, we noticed this winter, and we're supposed to be cleaning vehicles every day because of the, you know, the pandemic and stuff, that it's just, in the dead of winter, it's hard to get somebody out there that can actually sit out there in zero degrees and clean and disinfect the inside of a vehicle. We're spraying stuff on windows, the windows are freezing up. And then, of course, our clients get in a cold freezing van every morning, even though we warm them up a little bit. But it just would be nice to have someplace to house the vehicles, to perform day-to-day maintenance on them, day-to-day cleanliness, and have someplace to do that round-the-clock maintenance, and also double as a, some kind of storage facility.
There's space there for the garage addition somewhere without?
There is. So when I talked to Stephen, we, and I didn't do a drawing, I mean, I got a drawing in my head, but from the last renovation we did, I learned that if you tell an architect what you want, that's what he'll give you. Where if you tell him what you need, he'll give you options, and I, you know, so I could tell you where I think it should go. But, you know, in the end, he'll build it and go, well, that's not where I would have put it. So I kind of learned that lesson. So, yeah, when I talked to Stephen, there is a footprint there where all this space could be expanded to the side, the front, or the back, and still accommodate the parking and everything.
Okay.
And not interfere with the memorial or anything over there. So those are kind of the three pieces. The last piece we looked at was expanding the current waiting room. When we came into the six-foot distance and we measured everything out, we were down to two people we could have in our waiting room if we ever have to socially distance, which I hope we never have to again. But the other problem with the current waiting room as it is, is it's not very wheelchair, it is accessible for a wheelchair and for a scooter. Once I get a scooter and a wheelchair in there and two other people, we're running over people's toes and running into people and everything else. So it becomes a problem. So we'd like to expand that. And of course, with those updates, we'd like to update the facility into a touchless facility. That's probably one of the minimal costs, is just changing everything to where people don't have to touch stuff for those reasons. And one of the other current issues that this would solve is our IT room. Is currently, we have the IT, which started out as more or less where all the cables kind of went into, and now it's turned into a full-functional IT room with, I don't even know what they're called, servers and all that stuff. And it's in a closet with plumbing. There's lack of ventilation. We have cut a hole in the door and put a fan up in the ceiling and all that. But we've had things where we've got to leave the door open to get airflow in there. So this would solve kind of that problem, because we'd be able to put that outside of that room into a more modern type IT place. The resource center would, obviously, for our veterans, it would provide benefits and services, and would be capable of serving the needs of a growing community well into the future. I mean, we've looked out 20, 30 years and said that this facility with the additional office, the community room, would serve us for another 20 or 30 years in the direction we're going. The clientele that we serve currently, everybody looks at, obviously, the 13,000 veterans we have in the community. But we serve a much larger audience than that. We estimate that it actually would serve about 28% of the county, when we talk about their family members. And we went off of the average family size in the county and based that off the number of veterans. And then those second and third residual effects of widows, children that are, you know, grownups that come in that we help, their senior parents, things like that. So it's a large amount of the community that would help and not just impact the veterans.
What is our current veterans approximately in the county?
It's almost, just under 13,000. And it is going down. And that's the next thing that I want to kind of highlight. It is going down, but the estimate is in 2024, it's supposed to start going back up. So it's not going to decrease to a point to where this, you know, the numbers are going to affect the type of work we're doing, or how many people we're impacting. We estimate 31,000 household family members of veterans, and then another 5,000 non-household family members. And the other agencies that we assist throughout the county, we work with just about every agency possible. The housing, we work with Skip, we work with Job and Family Services, we work with the Office for Older Adults, we've even worked with the sheriff's office over there a couple times. And the problem, that's where it's become a problem of capacity of hiring another county veteran service officer, is right now, we don't have somebody that can go out into the community and do that. I used to have an outreach person, and that person now is doubled as more of a, kind of like an accounts payable, accounts receivable. When we went to Munis, a lot of that workload that used to be given to the county auditor's office is now done in our office. So that person spends the majority of its time doing stuff like that. And I got to be honest, if financial assistance was to go back up to probably half the rate we were in 2009, I wouldn't have the capability to do that. And, you know, I'd be having them work overtime quite a bit. So we do impact with a lot of other agencies throughout the county. The current staffing, I just listed that there, so you can see where we think we should be at and what positions aren't filled. And I already highlighted the fact that, you know, that one person is now doing more work for, I guess, more administrative work and less work for people, you know, in some fashion. The additional duties that we all do, we all do outreach and marketing, because the one person that I used to have do it, I started out doing it, I still do it quite a bit. I mean, I'm out in the community every chance I get. But I just don't have somebody that I can send out like I used to, to all the assisted livings, to all the events, to all the agency meetings. I mean, I try to, you know, every other month, we probably miss one or two of the different meetings that we go to. We currently don't have any IT person, and I really do miss Keith, I got to be honest with you. But we hire that out, and that's become a problem with just small things that we need an IT person for. We do reach out to the county IT department. Thankfully, I'm pretty knowledgeable with IT stuff, but that's, that's an additional duty sometimes. I mean, when we bought all-new computers, I probably spent a week putting all those computers together. There was nobody that came in and wired them, downloaded the software, hooked them all up. Keith helped to an extent, but that wasn't his job. So luckily, the guy that we do contract with, he actually said, I'll show you how to do one, and you can do the rest, because I'm sure you don't want to pay me. So that was time away from my job of what I do to help people, to put all this IT structure together. So that would help with the additional person also. We talked already a little about the Valor Court that we're doing in the city of Medina, and I, that will expand. I mean, it's going to roll over, I assume, one of the, I mean, I know the county prosecutor's already been in conversations with the judges to try to do one here in the county. So that's just an additional task that we're doing also. The estimates that I came up with, of course, the square footage on the garage size, the community and boardroom, and the waiting room expansion, and then there's a hallway that would go between those two, the current structure and the garage and the community room. Again, those estimates are just based off of a 289 dollars per square foot estimate. Steve kind of gave me a number, and then when I talked to the state of Ohio, they kind of gave me another number. They said the garage would be lower. I don't know if that's true or not. They just said a garage doesn't cost as much to make as the rest of it. So I think that estimated cost of 599,000 is probably, I don't know, 150,000, maybe over. Again, you'd probably know more than I would, building the courthouse, what it costs to build stuff. I really, it's just an estimate. And short of going out to an architect, I guess, would be the process to find out what it really costs. But I think it's a fair estimate, and I did go with a high number instead of a low number. I just thought that was safe to do.
So the four projects are the restructuring of the building, 50 grand, the boardroom, community room, 150 grand, the garage, 250, and then the IT upgrades, 50,000?
Yeah, I think, I think, so that was the original numbers that we had submitted that you have there.
Okay.
If you look in the sheet I just gave you, that number's kind of changed.
This?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
And we just based it off of a square footage.
So?
It would accomplish all those things in that first document that I gave you.
You didn't split up the projects anymore on this paper. It's all under the 599, 675.
So Ed, the garage at 40 by 20, that's going to get you two or three bays?
Three and a half bays.
Okay, three and a half. Okay.
Amy, did you see, did you see that they're all four now?
That isn't, the one bay we have now would be in the current structure, and again, what's in my head, it would actually close that door off, and that would just be a storage room. Yeah, kind of what we're using it for now, yeah.
All right, so we got the garage size, community room, waiting room, and hallway.
Yes.
Amy, put everybody on the spot. If you had to prior, put those one through four of importance to, what are they?
The community, the community room and the boardroom expansion would also allow me to separate the current boardroom I have into another office. So that would be my number-one priority.
Garage, number two?
Number two would be the garage. The hallway is just kind of how I envisioned you'd, you'd build a hallway between the current building and those two existing rooms.
The other two together would be three.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The future expense and cost of this, we figured it would be minimal. I talked to Stephen, and I think I talked to Scott a couple months ago about it, and we thought, you know, the only real cost would be utilities and the upkeep of the building, cleaning, water, light, stuff like that. The largest cost would be, obviously, I'd have another office to hire somebody. So that would be probably the largest cost on a yearly basis, would be the salary. There are no current other means to finance this except to go into our budget. Currently, I listed on page five, the, what we've turned back in the last three years, what we've turned back in in the last three years would more than pay for this. And then there's the other, you know, portion that we don't appropriate from the half mil. So that would be a discussion that we would have to have with, obviously, you three. I do want you to know that this was in discussion before this money came available. Our board was starting to look at, you know, hey, how do we get another office out of this building? So the thoughts were there before this happened. I'm trying to think of what else. Just to show that our clients, you know, even with the veterans' population diminishing and going down, our caseload and clients have risen 30% in the last 10 years. So I think before COVID, we were almost at 4,000 appointments a year. And back when I started in 2008, we were maybe 700 a year. So, you know, the more we market, the more we advertise, and it's not just us, it's the state of Ohio, it's the federal government. I mean, the VA is advertising on TV, they advertise on billboards. Veterans are getting out of the service now and being told to go to their local communities. You know, we all know that local government works best for its people. I think that, you know, I'm a full believer in that. So they're coming to us, and we want them to come to us. And so it's not going to decrease, even if the numbers start to go down. The only way to really measure it, I mean, we can go off of the GDX and the numbers of people that we see, and the money that we see coming in, and every year that's gone up in the last 10 years. But really, I think, you know, the way I measure success is by talking to vets in the county. We're still a fairly rural county. I get out a lot. And, you know, I hear complaints, and I hear a lot of good news, too. So that's how I measure success, if people are being satisfied with the services we provide. So it's not just a money thing, but we do see the money coming into, everybody likes data. And I think that's about it. No, one thing I do want to highlight. So 75% of the people that come into our office do suffer from some kind of physical, mental disability, whether it's an illness, cancer, you know, a mental health issue. 40% of those suffer from some type of illness that is detrimental, that, you know, the slightest sickness could push them over, whether it's brain cancer, lung cancer, things like that. We have a hard, especially with the Vietnam veterans, a high probability of those type of illnesses coming into our office. So the additional sanitation of the vehicles, the area to do that, the spacing of the waiting room, would create, we feel as though, a healthier environment for them to come into. I mean, so. Am I under my 15 minutes?
You did good. Thank you.
Did well.
All right.
That's it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Skip, you're up.
They are cold, David. They are three-hole. They are not staples. I have a staple, just like a groove.
Look at, he's got his own tabs.
But it felt weird to, three-hole and staple.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners, Scott, Amy, Rhonda. For the record, Skip Cypress, the executive director of the Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority. And the authority appreciates the opportunity to present to you its funding proposal for American Rescue Plan dollars, the county's allocation. I have provided you some additional information, slightly updated from the initial numbers that were presented to you from Amy. And this presentation is something that should be familiar to you. This is for permanent supportive housing. As a reminder, permanent supportive housing is housing for homeless individuals with a federally qualifying disability. Think, if you will, a veteran with a traumatic brain injury. Think of someone born with a developmental or intellectual disability. Think of someone suffering from mental illness, an addiction of some sort. Those types of folks would be eligible for this. It's not just the housing, though, that we wrap around services that are provided for this type of housing. And I'm coining the phrase or the term right now, Lafayette Quarters. We'll see if that name sticks. It's anticipated to be developed on Lafayette Road, adjacent to the Juvenile Court Annex, on two different parcel of land that will be combined. The first was the parcel that the commissioners conveyed to the housing authority. We appreciate that. The second is under contract and in the midst of our due diligence, architectural and engineering studies, a FAVs one environmental audit, and an appraisal to make sure we don't overpay. What would be developed would be 10 independent one-bedroom apartments, common space in the building to accommodate community activities, as well as services to be provided to the residents, laundry facilities, and storage for the residents. This building would be designed, and the idea in our parlance, it's universal design, so it could be switched around for accommodation purposes. At least one of the units would be designed for mobility accessibility for those in wheelchairs, and at least one for those with sensory impairments. The units would also be designed with an eye towards energy efficiency. This is what we do with all of our properties, Energy Star appliances, Energy Star fixtures. We're going to seek LEED certification, probably silver, on this building. And the residents and staff will be as they are in all of our buildings, which is consistent with the housing authority's environmental vision statement, working to divert recyclable materials consistent with. It's our only request, so prioritizing, this is it.
This is easy to do, isn't it? Skip, where are the other funds coming from?
In your packet, you will find the development budget. Tab 2 shows you sources and uses of funds. We anticipate... And again, it's chicken and egg, if you will. I believe the egg came first, but regardless, it helps if we know that we have a resource allocated to us that we can use as our leverage in the competition with the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. Other sources include the land that you guys have already conveyed, the city of Medina is contributing $70,000. The housing authority will kick in, and we will be the gap filler with our resources. And there will also be a small first mortgage on this property. So those are your sources and uses. The cost estimates are pretty consistent with other development activity that we're doing, so I have a leg up on Ed here. We're used to building, and we work with architects, and those estimates on a per-unit cost are really in line with what we're seeing cost today.
So how firm is the Ohio Housing Finance Grant? Is that something that you...
I think it is not firm as of today. It's something that we would compete for. I can tell you that we receive considerable grant allocations from OFA on a routine basis. We compete really well, and our properties are always full and perform ahead of expectations, the economic expectations. I'm very confident in it, but again, chicken and egg, I'd rather be here first today to show local support before I go down to Columbus.
And... I'm sorry.
And the first mortgage, it would fit fine in your budget?
Yes, and at tab 3 is the operating budget.
Before we move on.
I'm sorry.
When will you know about the OFA grant from a timing standpoint?
Part of that depends on how today goes, I suppose, because I don't want to get out over my skis. I don't want to go to OFA and ask for a dollar figure. When they're looking at us for the balance of those funds, they're going to ask the same question, what's committed? Again, my chicken and egg.
So what's a typical timeframe? So I guess my question is, you know, we have a certain tranche of money available this year.
Oh, this would be...
Certainly tranche available next year.
Next year.
So I'm just trying to figure out...
Your time... In terms of a timer, well, certainly we'd beat the requirement to allocate or obligate the funds and expend the funds. That's easily done. I would say by this time next year, I'm hoping I'm moving dirt with OFA money.
Okay.
But certainly next year.
So to be clear, it's easier to obtain OFA money if they show that you have skin in the game?
Skin in the game and local support.
Got it.
So the OFA, I guess the OFA funding is, it's not calendar-dependent right now, you're basically going...
They open the window a couple of different times during the year. There are also potentially new sources, given coming down this once-in-a-generation-alike kind of a thing.
But at this point, obviously, a significant advantage, you have the commitment from the commissioners, as well as, you know, the city of Medina and others.
And the authority itself, yes.
The authority itself, that here's the combined funding package when you apply.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Our request is for bricks and sticks. It's not operating cost. There is an operating budget in your packet, shows how we believe this will function. It's based similarly to the development that we manage on behalf of the Adam Board. They have a property, we call it Northland 2 on Northland Drive, that is a permanent supportive housing development. And we know how it works. We know that it's full on a routine basis, so those numbers are realistic. I'll quickly go through the nine areas we were asked to address in addition to things... The permanency of the improvement, easily 50-plus years. We're celebrating the 50th anniversary of one of the properties the housing authority manages right now, which has very little deferred maintenance. It's in good shape, always full. We also manage a building for the Adam Board on Washington Street that the Frieda Snyder family built, I believe, in the '30s, and it still works really well and is always full. The budget you'll see calls for an allocation of approximately $5,500 a year or so that we should be able to fund a replacement reserves. I don't anticipate any capital needs in the first 10 years if we build it right, and that's our history. Agency information, for the record, housing authority is a political subdivision of the state body corporate politic. We are accountable to the public. We have a five-member publicly-appointed board, non-compensated board members. You appoint 20% of that board, one member, and our meetings are open to the public. And not only would this allocation of funding be transparent and accountable to the public, so would the ongoing operations. So oftentimes, public will raise a concern, it gets addressed at the board meeting, I get yelled at if things don't happen right, and we move on. So again, we're publicly accountable, and the ORC, Ohio Revised Code section is 3735. That's the enabling legislation. The availability of the other funding sources are noted in your packet. I also give you a 10-year operating pro forma, just to show you how we anticipate this going. We show rents growing at 2% a year, but expenses at 3, and we're still cash flowing well out into the 10th year. That's consistent with how we typically budget and develop properties. The Housing Finance Agency likes that format that I use, so I'm using it with you guys as well. The multi-agency benefit Sheriff Grice mentioned earlier, and Ed mentioned it for veterans, is we all work together. The Housing Network, as you know, is working on the three-prong approach to homelessness stuff. Sheriff Grice is participating with us. We're looking at this opportunity to collaborate even more than we already do. We work with the Adam Board and Alternative Paths. We work with BODD and the Society, the Society formerly known as the Society for End Care Citizens. That's just our nature in this county. You guys know that as well as I do. Operating costs, they're covered. An impact to the community served is another one of the areas that you want us to address. Make no mistake about it, there's demand for this housing. This is housing for homeless persons with federally qualifying disabilities. We serve over 70 households. A household can be one, it can be larger, every month who are formerly homeless, meeting the same criteria for this property. So we know that there are neighbors, our family and friends, our fellow parishioners. This isn't something to be built that someone's going to come from out of county. This is going to serve people already here in our county. And not serving this population candidly is a disservice to our, those same family, friends, parishioners. It just is. Does it advance a public benefit? Yes, of course. Otherwise, homeless, disabled individuals wouldn't be housed, and we know they exist. They come to our office daily. Even in the midst of COVID, we still serve people. We see them in our office every day. Measurable outcomes would be the number housed over the years, a reduction in the recidivism of homelessness, which is a goal, and other tangible outcomes, employment, sobriety, education. You know, if we can enhance the quality of life that people we serve, we're striking all the right chords. The measurements of success, the completion of the project's construction, I want to share with you right now, the 45-unit building that we're building on Seville Road in Wadsworth, thank you for the kind words yesterday, appreciate that, in conjunction as a workforce development effort with the Economic Development Corporation. Despite COVID and all the supply chain challenges, we are on time and under budget. That's our, that's what we do. I mean, everybody knows I like to squeeze pennies till they give up even more pennies, but that's just, that's our nature, and we do that. I anticipate nothing less for this development. We're going to be delivering services as well as housing, which is needed, and again, in collaboration with our other service providers. And it's fair to point out, I don't want to be too rosy here, success dealing with people who are in crisis, it doesn't come to every household that we work with. It's very challenging work for the staff, but it's even more rewarding when we really truly help people. That's what this funding would help us do. Number of residents that would benefit, clearly, it's the people that are housed there, but it's also their families and the extended families and the community at large. The community benefits when folks are aided. It also helps us know who we are as a community. I think that's important to you guys. I know it's important to me. For this to be successful, Lafayette Quarters needs support like this, financial support. And you guys went a long way by conveying that land. That was a big deal. That looks really good at the state level, I can tell you that. For the city of Medina to step up like they did, that's pretty amazing. Looks good, and it is good. And I want to make sure I say this, the American Rescue Plan specifically authorizes the use of its funding for permanent supportive housing, and it specifically authorizes counties and municipalities to use those resources allocated to it for those purposes. So this clearly fits within the guidelines established. I appreciate the consideration of this. Happy to entertain any other questions you might have.
I wonder if you could describe for everybody, you know, this so-called continuum of care, this is a continuum of housing, how supportive housing fits in, and especially with assistance to people that are homeless, with disabilities. Is this meant to be that they permanently there, or is this, the idea is that they basically, as they get the support services, they can then transition?
There's no requirement for someone to vacate if they're doing better, but the case plan, and each one is individualized for everybody that lives there, is designed to enhance their opportunities for a better quality of life, and success can be defined in a million ways. Some folks will move on to other housing options. If you remember my three-pronged tool, one of those is developing other units where folks could, they don't like to use the word transition in my industry anymore, but that's what we're talking about, where they would transition to another housing situation, thereby opening up that apartment for someone in a similar situation. I did mention, trying to keep to that clock, we will work to make sure that rental assistance is provided, it's in your packet, for everyone who lives there, so that we will be assured of the cash flow necessary to operate it. We're not coming back here and asking you for money to operate it, but it's vital that the folks have those wraparound services in order to potentially move on to other housing.
If they so desire.
Yes. Nope, no obligation to do so.
Exactly. So I just wanted to make sure that this, because the word permanent seems to imply something else for some people.
Correct. Yeah.
How many square footages each unit? Are they, can they be used for more than, you know, a small family of four, or is it there...
These are all going to be one-bedroom apartments, because the typical homeless person or household that we deal with is usually one or two people. So these are going to be 650 approximately square-foot apartments.
Okay.
One-bedroom, full kitchen, living area, very comparable to Northland 2 that we managed for the Adam Board.
What about women with children?
They could live there, much like we're seeing at the recovery house that we're helping with the Adam Board. Questions, concerns, celebrations?
No. All right.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. Love it when I'm on time. Oops.
Sheriff, were you happy about the cars we did yesterday?
Yeah, it was great. Thank you very much. I was happy to have them sitting there.
Hello.
Hello there.
Hey, how we doing?
We're running early.
We're actually 15 minutes early, which is actually a very good thing.
I was in nothing else parking lot at quarters of three when Kathy started going, "Why?" She actually is that voice. I'm very excited to be here.
You're John, right? You are up.
No, it sounded like her.
Am I standing? My goodness.
Raffaka. When you came in, I thought you got your hair cut, and then you...
What's that? Who wants these? One, two, go on, all six?
We need four.
Four, two, three, four. And basically, in my experience, there are people that like one-pagers and people that like decks. So you have the choice of documents. It's funny, there's a document that looks like this, which is basically a summary version of a deck.
Got it.
They're identical, but it's all about your... Do I have a microphone? Wow.
Very cool, Gary. Was it? We're very cool.
Well, you did not, I wasn't prepared for this level of professionalism. Okay, so do I just start?
You may.
Okay.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm John Liebler. If you don't know me, I've been with the Recovery Center now 60 days.
Then I don't know you.
No, no. I've been in Medina 25-plus years, but I spent most of my time in working over at Signet Jewelers in corporate world. What's relevant, about five years ago, I retired and started my own consulting business, and while I was doing that, I've been in and out of, working with nonprofit for quite some time. This year, I did leadership Medina County, and when the position for the Recovery Center came across, it felt like a good fit, so I applied, and they were kind enough to bring me onboard. So that's my background. Any questions about that before?
You're welcome.
Yes, it's been, it's been quite a ride. So 60 days in, obviously, the first 30 days, I'm going to give you a little bit of background before we get into the grant, because it's kind of a build here, if you don't mind, and we have, what, 15 minutes, or I have a half hour?
Yes.
Shorter's less. Got it. I can go as quickly as you would like. So here's the build. It's 30 days in, obviously, building out a strategic plan. The first thing that was really critical that I want to bring up is separating the Recovery Center, so obviously, I think most of you probably understand the history and the background of the Culinary Institute, and it is. It's a culinary institute, it's a restaurant, and it's also a recovery center. We moved the Recovery Center off-site, so it's in the parking lot now, in the house, but it's no longer part of the Culinary Institute and the restaurant for a number of reasons, but that has been done, and that was part of the first strategy we wanted to implement. So complete. The next three pieces for the strategic plan center around building awareness, building student enrollment, and more completion of the actual program, and then finally expanding what we're teaching there. So when it comes to awareness, most people understand that the Culinary Institute exists. Not a lot of people understand what we do there, and what we're finding is, and I'll call it the partner community, there were some hesitants about sending people to us. So what we've been doing for the last 30 days is I've been reaching out to everybody, and there's a list in the appendix, and it's also, I think, probably on page three of partners, and anything with an asterisk is somebody that I've talked to since I've been here. And what we found immediately is that we need to build awareness, and people want us to come to them. So Katz, Lakata, Sheriff Grice and I have had a couple of conversations, Gail over at Alternative Paths, the Huntington Senior Living Home. Once we talk about our program, us being able to go to them becomes a very important part of who we are, because we can bring the message to the people that are in their community. Number one, exposing them and creating possibly a student population, but more importantly, also exposing them to our team. So I don't know, has anybody here met Chef Todd, or know of Chef Todd? So I'll use him as one example. Chef Todd, six years sober, in and out of jail most of his life. He's, and he's the executive chef there, eight kids. His wife is also now five years sober, lost her kids to the system multiple times. She's now a social worker. She works with at-risk moms, and he's a miracle. And so when we put him in front of anybody, and, you know, you'd have to see Chef, he's this big, he's got the broken nose like that, right? And he's like, "What are you doing?" People just resonate, and it inspires them. And so I've seen this a couple of times now, so getting him in front of people, and now getting him in front of people either demoing what we do and/or actually teaching. So many of the conversations as we've had now with Sheriff Grice and with some of the other partners, and that we practiced in one area, was teaching cooking skills in the actual facility. So one of the first programs we're going to have, we're going to Katz tomorrow, and we're doing a demo, but we're talking with Gail over at AP about doing something for the women population over at the jail, and we can modify the program however they would like, but we'll set up the materials and we'll teach them cooking skills. And this isn't going to be how to break down octopus, right? We can teach that, but what we really want to do now is start to modify and teach more like cooking skills. I had a conversation with Katie over at Freedom Medina County yesterday, and, you know, we're talking about how can we take what they're presenting in a food bag and now teach someone how to make that, make it healthy, make it easy, things of that. So this is all where we're going with taking it on the road. And then wanting to increase student enrollment, because those people will then see that there is a path forward, there's something that will happen when they leave, and they've got something waiting for them in the way of a job and the way of education when they get here. and that we've practiced in one area was teaching cooking skills in the actual facility. So one of the first programs we're going to have, we're going to Katz tomorrow, and we're doing a demo, but we're talking with Gail over at AP about doing something for the women population over at the jail. And we can modify the program however they would like, but we'll set up the materials and we'll teach them cooking skills. And this isn't going to be how to break down octopus, right? We can teach that, but what we really want to do now is start to modify and teach more light cooking skills. I had a conversation with Katie over at feeding Medina County yesterday, and, you know, we're talking about how can we take what they're presenting in a food bag and now teach someone how to make that, make it healthy, make it easy, things of that. So this is all where we're going with taking it on the road. And then wanting to increase student enrollment because those people will then see that there is a path forward. There's something that will happen when they leave and they've got something waiting for them in the way of a job and the way of education when they get here. We also, which I think is really important, are doing more than teaching culinary skills. And so what I've seen in my, you know, 60 days is we're teaching people to communicate. We're teaching people how to get to work on time. Most of the employees, when I got there, were getting paper checks. Now everyone's getting a, I have them on paytime. That seems like a little thing, but if you're going to work in the real world, that's something that's important. Another little silly thing, I taught one of the guys how to wear a collarstay the other day. So, you know, your shirt's got all wrinkled and you got to put collarstays in, right? How to dress and all of that. So these are all the other skills we're teaching beyond just cooking. Okay? So the other piece is transportation. And this gets a little bit, one of the, I would say the two biggest barriers, and I have no statistics to back this up, this is anecdotal, but one of the biggest barriers is transportation, is you talk to the team, the people who have left the program, sometimes it's for another job, sometimes it's because they've, they've, you know, lost their path in recovery and they've got some challenges, but a lot of times they just can't get there. And we've got one student who's, I won't use his name, but he says, Pop says to bring him to work, right? So Pop picks him up at 10 o'clock at night after work. Pop's can't always get him, right? And he lives out in Woldy. Speaking to Francis' House is another example where they've got, or even Katz, they've got 14 people there, right? They can get them to us, but they can't get them back. So can we work a partnership if we have transportation where we can load up three or four people that are students and bring them back to an organization? And, you know, there are half a dozen places we can do that. So, and I know I'm not following a script here. I'm not a script guy.
That's right. So let me ask you two a question.
No, she's, no, please.
So how do your two programs correlate to one another?
I still have his board.
Well, fair enough.
He's talking about the transportation vans, yeah.
But, but, nah, I mean, I'm not talking about that, but, but you made a proposal to us
Right.
for vans and a similar sort of program. So my question is, how do those two things work together? Do they?
I mean, they could, you know, absolutely. However, these folks already are here. They're already in the program. So we have a fixed point. Like yesterday, I was saying, for public transit, you have to have one of the two ends be a fixed point. This is a fixed point. So this is solvable through other means, whereas what I'm trying to do, no, nothing's fixed. So it's all very.
And I, I don't know a lot about what Kathy presented, but I thought yours was also somewhat focused around the manufacturing piece. I don't know if it's accurate.
And healthcare.
And healthcare.
Yeah.
And what I didn't want to do is, it's always difficult when you're making a presentation because you don't want one piece of the, of the ask to overshadow another piece of the ask. So this is really multiple pieces. The, the initial concept of this program was to take us to partner establishments and teach and expose the program. An ancillary benefit of that is also we would then have a van to then transport students. And whether or not your program long-term will support that, I don't know. But what I find is our students are very spread out, but they're spread out in such a way that I, we can get them here and our hours are a little bit funky, right? So we're working to 10 o'clock at night, things of that nature. So, so that's the thought process there. The last piece of this, and then, then we can, is this expand the curriculum to offer a broader way of skills. So French cooking's great. And the concept of teaching French cooking is that if you can do it, you can do just about anything, right? If you can break down an octopus, you can cook a burger. But it is a little bit singular focused. And so if we can expand that to other types of cooking and things beyond cooking, baking, just as an example, we can then help the students in a broader array of jobs that will help them out. So what you're seeing here is an ask for the transportation, but as well as equipment to enable the mobile portion of the training and then expand the curriculum to, to some of the, some of the equipment is here is to teach other types of things. And if you start asking me real detailed questions about some of the equipment, I will fail and I will send you a Google link or bring Chef Todd in to tell you.
Phil's quite connoisseur of food, so I'm sure he knows all the terms.
Yeah, well, I get nervous about that. That's not my thing. And they kind of, they're calling me.
I have no idea what a Blodgett combi oven is.
Actually, that's a really cool piece of equipment. And I did, because let's, I come from a world where we did a zero-based budget and people would come and hit me up for lots of money all the time. And I would be, okay, let's, let's talk this through. When we had to justify any expense, and I had a million-five budget outside of the payroll budget, and we had to justify any expense over $5,000. So, you know, we're sitting here, we have 15 minutes, but I asked those tough questions and I made him go through what these were. That particular piece of equipment is really interesting. It expands not only what you can cook, but also speeds up cooking time. It reduces waste because there's less mistakes and it reduces payroll because you don't need as many people cooking. So there's this real cool ancillary benefit to it, but I didn't want to come up here and start giving an ROI on the Blodgett cooker. But those types of questions have been asked and the, I realize the ask is 68,000. That's number was reverse engineered because I said to them, you know, "How much is the van? What year would it be? We don't need a new van. Show me the equipment." We went out, talked to our vendors. "What would that cost?" Like, so we reversed engineer to come up with a number. It's not a number and then I'll figure out how to spend it. So that's part of all of this as well.
Well, I think that the other reason that the two transportation pieces are different is because we are hoping to find the people that their only barrier to work is transportation. So if they could solve that, they could go to work, they could be successful and on their path. The folks that John deals with are going to have another issue, right? They're going to be in recovery. They're going to be in the jail, you know? So they have, they have other issues that have to be solved first. So we need those other services around them. And, you know, we didn't provide any wraparound in our proposal.
Right, right. Okay. So the ask is 68,000 basically to buy the van and, and the supplies and equipment that you need to have a mobile cooking school.
Correct. Mobile cooking school. And I also want to tell you, so right now, the team is over at Business in the Barn.
Yes.
Right? And we got to Business in the Barn.
So I'm heading there.
As am I. So you'll see, we'll, we'll all go there. We'll have some, we'll have some Bananas Fosters. Ask Todd, ask Bradford what happened today.
Your Bananas Fosters is excellent.
Thank you. I have nothing to do with it, but it is good. But ask how they got there. We loaded up three vehicles. Then they drove back to get the Ice Chest in, rode it back up there, and that's, and the table, and that's how we got it there. We've got Taste in Medina coming up. We really don't have any idea. We'll, we'll figure it out. We'll borrow my wife's car or something. But that's the other thing that I'm using, you know, I'm using my staff's vehicles and you can imagine they're not 2000, you know, 2020, you know, right? And so to continue doing this type, they haven't really had the problem because of COVID too much. Kathy will tell you, I'm, I pride myself on networking. And, and, you know, we've joined multiple change groups of Congress. We're going to participate in everything we can participate in. We're going to meet with all the partners. It's going to put a lot of stress on our ability to, to fulfill what I'm asking people to involve us in. What questions do you have?
Amy, what category?
Oh, hi, Amy, by the way. I didn't even say hello when I came. This, I'm here, it's Amy's fault, by the way.
So the two categories we cited were to support public health response and negative economic impacts with a, perhaps the latter, if you're continuing to provide opportunity to folks particularly in an increased environment of substance abuse and other mental health.
Yeah, I did put a page in there. The, there was a scorecard and I didn't put, I get nervous presenting data, especially if the data is not completely verifiable. And coming out of 2020, some, with COVID, a lot of the numbers are skewed either in one's favor or not in one's favor. But I think the opioid crisis and addiction and the cost of jail and all of that is well-known. And so, you know, exactly right. Anytime we can get someone in the program or inspire someone, if, if nothing else, this is the hardest part to quantify. If Todd is speaking in front of 25 people in the jail and three of them are inspired their story, and we never see them, but they know there's life out there and hope and they can get better, that's part of what this is all about as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, John. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Was it? No, thank you.
Very good.
It's my first time speaking in this forum, so I.
You did great. Now the hard part.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. On our list, we had 25, and there's a couple of redactions, so 24 or so items. So are we not going to have presentations from the other ones that did not present? So like the probate juvenile court did not, courthouse project? Okay, so we can strike, so we can strike 16? Okay. So the, the US pickleball ambassador, I was kind of curious about that one.
And so the information in your binder is pretty descriptive on what that would entail, but also some of the challenges in terms of not having, if my recollection serves me, they don't have a current property on which to build the courts. They have several other challenges. From a conceptual standpoint, it's interesting and worth a read and some consideration.
So I guess my point, we, we need to evaluate that, but we're not going to have a formal presentation.
Correct. I think the ones that they didn't present, it was pretty self-evident.
What about transit? That was for the HVAC.
HVAC stuff.
They did that, yep. Okay, so, okay. So we just need to look at the ones, all of them, the remaining ones that did not present. And we'll score those as well. Okay. So when are we going to have our scores done?
You have listed Government Services 23, and there's nothing there. What is that?
Yeah, but what's most government?
It's right before the Medina County Skyhawks.
What are Medina County Skyhawks?
Okay, so the Government Services is under the ARP guidelines. You're allowed to recognize revenue replacement.
Revenue replacement. Okay, okay.
That they call it under the category of governmental services.
Okay, but we did, did.
489,000 dollars, I think is what we.
Okay.
And these are for the county departments?
That is revenue replacement. So we can take that money and we can spend it on projects. So the thought was that we would spend it on the bridge at the Human Service Center. And I think there was an overage at the parking lot, but there was, there was something.
We should have had Steven do those when he was there.
Yeah.
Well, revenue replacement, it's, it's, it's in there, it's given. We can take that money and use that.
So it's got, that there was a formula for calculating that, if I recall correctly. So we followed the formula. And so I, you're doing the presentation right now. So the ask is for 489,000 to be set aside for that?
Yes.
That line item?
Yeah.
Okay. So as we go through and evaluate.
Yeah. And I just talked to Steve about this this morning. There's the bridge and we have to do the city two-point square. There's some work we need to do on the outside that needs to be done. Starting to, the FOSH is starting to fall apart. And so he wants it, it's about $100,000 there. And the remaining 389,000 dollars will take care of the bridge and the Human Service Center.
Okay, so are those, well, that's revenue replacement. So we've qualified it, we're just going to appropriate it out of general.
Basically, we're not scoring it. It's not going to be one we include.
What about the hybrid combination seven and nine? Seven and?
Okay, so that is the combination of the two asks related to premium pay.
Oh.
The premium pay. Got it.
So, okay.
Okay, so we have, and if I recall, under the Juvenile Detention Center, there were two tabs. One was for Steven's HVAC stuff, and then the other tab was for the premium pay from Ron Stoller.
Correct.
If I recall. Okay.
And we're, and that one we are ranking, or.
Okay, so, so do we rank those as seven and nine, or do we rank them combined as 25? Just so we do it all the same?
Seven, nine. I would, I would rank each one of these separately.
Okay, so we can strike 25.
No.
No.
Well, no, we're not going to include premium pay with the evaluation of the HVAC, are we?
Well, so.
That's a different issue.
Wait, probate and juvenile, they only had the premium pay. They didn't have HVAC.
Right, right.
So that, that is, seven is?
Seven is probate and juvenile courts premium pay.
Yeah.
And then nine was juvenile detention center premium pay. They also had HVAC, but they had asked for specifically premium pay.
So should nine be their HVAC and 25 be juvenile dissension premium pay? I mean?
So 25 came about from just a question as to applicability beyond those two departments.
Should we have a separate discussion on premium pay across the board?
It's, it's characterized in the.
In the spreadsheet? Yeah.
But certainly there could be further discussion.
I think there ought to be.
I, 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 exactly. So I, I think if we're going to do this for one area, we should do it for all areas. Or not, as the case may be.
Right.
But I, I.
Agreed.
So my, my suggestion would be is let's, let's leave number nine as the HVAC request.
I would agree.
And move, strike number seven.
Strike number seven.
Okay. And then we will evaluate 25.
As premium pay.
As a request for premium pay.
Right.
I like that idea. Seven's done. Nine is HVAC. 25, premium pay.
The one thing to remember with premium pay is you can only pay those employees who actually work.
Right.
So if they did not work from the office, they are not allowed to pay for the premium.
Well, technically, the sheriff's department would be qualified, employees would be qualified for premium pay also, would they not?
Yeah.
He did not ask that. So, like I said, I think this is an issue.
Technically, all employees that came to the office.
They came to work.
Sanitary head.
We did have some employees that would come home.
Right.
They're not eligible.
Right.
So we would have to determine who those individuals were and.
When we got the initial quest, I had, had Amy make just a number and it was what?
For premium pay?
It was like $750,000 or something like that, but that didn't include investigating who worked from home.
Correct.
Right. And that would have been for the whole, you know, county. But again, that did not include subtracting who worked from home.
Okay, so, but, but for our purposes.
Right.
I, I would suggest that we score it on the conceptual basis of, do we agree or don't agree with the concept of premium pay?
I would agree.
And then whatever decision we make, then we apply universally.
I would agree.
Amongst the entire county.
Perfect.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay.
What was Medina County Skyhawks? That's the only other one on the list I don't.
So they are a 501(c)(3) and they are looking to rehabilitate an existing building that they had on property. It was a very small ask for $5,000. In there, tab 24, with some photographs and a description.
Okay. Because when I look at the list now of the 25, that was the only one that, I, I think everything else we've talked about, correct?
This is the one on the Wattsworth Municipal Park, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Civilian Air Patrol.
Yes.
Basically. Okay, got it. Okay.
I had not evaluated. They cited, I do believe, negative economic impacts, but I had not find.
Right.
So when, when do we want to score these? And my thought is that we individually score them. We give them to Amy. You can tabulate them and then we'll have a discussion session amongst us.
Sure.
To talk about the scores.
And I, I think it would be good to do a roundtable discussion, even though we're individually scoring, because we may talk about a percentage of a project potentially instead of 100%, even though something would score high in a roundtable discussion, things like that could come up.
Amy, what tab is our score sheet? Is there one?
You, it, there's not in your binder presently, but they are prepared for each of your respective.
So if I recall correctly, on the score sheet toward the bottom, isn't there a line for either a percentage or a dollar amount that we would suggest or recommend for a given project?
I do believe that was added as well as a notes section, so you could annotate any.
Thoughts we had.
Thoughts around that.
But a roundtable discussion, we may all come to consensus.
Oh, no, no, I, I agree. So, so we score them, we give them to Amy, we get a tabulation of all of our individual scores and, and a total. And then we come together and we talk about them because the discussion, we may want to change our individual scores and then that may change the relative ranking of the project overall.
And it isn't easy since we have 17 this year and so many wonderful projects.
Mm-hmm. A lot of good projects.
It's not an easy endeavor.
So I guess the question is, is you're going to score up to 17 and a half million this year and then go through this process again next year? And some of those projects that may not be planned this year may be planned next year, the second 17 and a half.
Well, we have to subtract the county home we spent and the fair that we already spent from the 17 and a half, correct?
And 49.
Yeah.
And the what?
Those are listed in here. You've already allocated on those existing projects, just a little under 1.5 million.
And what were those?
So the Fair Board grant was 125,000. The jail HVAC system was from number 600,000. And the county home was 742,000. Not the camera, click shares in here, but that has not. Not the camera click shares in here, but that has not been finalized.
So then we have another 489,000 for our revenue replacement.
Correct.
Yeah, but aren't we scoring that?
Revenue replacement?
No, I think that's just a given, right?
I thought that was...
I'd say it's a given.
Yeah.
It's a given, yeah.
So revenue replacement was what?
489.
So 125, 600, 742, and 489. Anybody have a calculation? I do.
And then we did the click share, and that's giving about 120.
Click share, which was what?
Conferencing.
Oh, yeah, 120.
So we're at about 2 million, right?
Allocated already under that.
Okay, 6... And 120. So, yeah.
Do we have an idea when the final will be coming out yet, Department of Treasury?
Nope. In fact, their last update to their frequently asked questions was July 19, so there's not been any updates to the Treasury website.
Okay.
So I met with Andy and Jeremy today, and Andy is scoring those projects tomorrow and then submitting it, and Jeremy's already submitted the projects for the funding of 250 million dollars. And Jeremy indicated he should know within 30 days that they're going to be funded. So we should know within 30 days whether or not any of those projects were funded. So that would reduce, you know, his ask by probably half. And he did include the 6 million for the...
The meter reading, right.
But we could still rank these, and if, of course, there's other money that comes available, it just basically goes down further the list.
But we're looking closer at 15 and change versus 17 and 1/2.
Right, right.
But I guess what we're trying to say is there's no rush to do. Maybe some smaller projects, we can get out the other ones. Like Jeremy's projects, if you score them high, you can wait. We can wait till October to do that.
Now, there's that... CCO has that symposium, which you saw on the 29th of September, which I think I intend on going to it.
I was looking to attend also.
Oh, good, good, yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, you guys may go to that seminar and be able to come back and say every one of these 25 projects or 24, whatever it is now, absolutely qualify. You know what I mean? That will be helpful information.
So do we... That is September 25th or 29?
29.
29?
Yeah.
So maybe plan for... Will we know by mid-October about Jeremy's project?
We should.
So maybe we could use mid-October as our benchmark for our scoring to be done. That way we know we'll have the guidance from the meeting in the late September timeframe.
To open the final rules.
Well, do we have any more, the need to have more immediate, I guess...
I do. I was having a small one that I was going to bring up Tuesday, but it's only 65 to 70,000, but...
That's not on this list?
That's not on this list.
Oh, okay.
I was, you know, we had something come up for AMA.
And, you know, Skip presented today.
Yeah.
And sooner he has that, the sooner he can go in there with...
Right, for the OFA.
And so forth. So those are things that we maybe ought to tentatively start looking at. I'm not in a hurry to spend it, but certainly in terms of our ranking, knowing if we want to try to make some commitment earlier than October for some. And I mean, even the Granger Homeowners Association, you know, they've got more immediate... I'm trying to think who else needs more immediate attention as well.
But how are we going to rank some and not all, from a relative important standpoint?
I think we need to rank them all.
Now?
Well, at least tentatively.
Yeah, if you rank them all, I mean, you'll rank them, you'll come up with the total of whatever the ask is, and you may have, you know, the ones at the very top, maybe there's some weight. You have ones in the middle, like maybe Skip's maybe in the middle. You know, you're like about 7 million dollars into, well, you know you're going to be able to fund it because you got 15 million dollars. So you might be able to start funding some of those. And then, let's say Jeremy's metering system ranks number one, and that's at 6 million, and he gets funded through the state. Now he's got a 3 million. So that 3 million kind of rolls to the bottom, and those bottom ones are funded.
What about the HVAC? Aren't those somewhat calendar-dependent, too? Some of those? Or no? I mean, like the highway engineers, I mean, that was one of the bigger ones.
The sheriffs already been informed that we're using some of this money, the HVAC for the jail, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But I mean, obviously, going in later, so the air conditioning aspect of it is no big deal.
Right.
The boiler systems are going to...
Okay, right, okay, all right. That's what I'm thinking. Some of these are probably more immediate than others we could hold along. At least get an idea and consensus.
So we want to, I'm hearing we want to score them earlier. So mid-September?
Okay.
I mean...
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Couple weeks at least.
I'll do it two weeks, three weeks to score them.
Yeah.
And it'd be interesting to see how they're scored. And again, if you have a small project like, you know, transit, it was $45,000 for HVAC. I mean, that's not a lot of money.
Well, I mean, well, here's a question.
I'm going to remind you of that comment.
Fiber optic was kind of an important one, at least in my book. And so the question is, especially, you can even separate the industrial portions to the residential, like, okay, do we want to actually move more immediately on that if we're going to do it? So you see what I'm kind of saying is like some of this...
I was going to, and I will present, because I have maps and everything, and Christina's going to come on Tuesday. It's a sanitation line move issue that needs some sort of expediency, because then they can't move forward their project.
Are you talking about with Jeremy's move?
Yeah, so I was going to bring you guys maps and Christina here and have it part of discussion session on Tuesday, because they can't move forward with their project until that's done.
So could we have our scoring to Amy by September 8? Is that reasonable? And that's basically three weeks.
I can't.
Three weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
And we can always move it back if something goes on we can't. Scores due September...
So just a question then, if I may ask you all, after they're scored, is that one you would like me to take the much deeper dive in chapter and verse to assure coverage based on those you select?
I think we absolutely need that information before we have our roundtable discussion.
I'd like them for scoring. I'd like to score some that's not eligible.
And the only difficulty is that we're still assessing these under the interim final rule. So, you know, there may be some areas of gray that would be subject to interpretation.
Right.
I mean, they're wondering we know for sure. We can use underwater projects. We can use it for fiber.
Right. Water, sewer, fiber.
Revenue replacement.
Revenue replacement.
Yep, and HVAC general.
We think so, yes.
Yes.
Primarily geared towards congregate settings, filtering and so forth. So even the transit one, though it's low dollar, the concern, and I believe Stephen expressed this, that's simply a controls piece, whether there's enough linkage to quality of air.
Mm-hmm.
That would be what we have to discern.
If it's makeup air, then I would say yes.
So that's what we have to discern.
And like the juvenile detention center HVAC, that's congregate.
Correct.
Gee, does the animal shelter count?
That was a huge price tag. I was shocked by that. The difference in price between the animal shelter and the other buildings was shocking.
So do we want to have then schedule another work session? So after we scored them, after Amy's tabulated everything, do we want to have another separate work session to talk about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it should be a regular Tuesday meeting.
I don't think, yeah. I would prefer to guess to have it separate.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
All right. So looking at our calendars, when would we like to schedule that?
I'm on the 15th, 16th, and 17th.
Okay.
That's all, that's the only...
So how about the 22nd or 29th? And I'm just, those are two days that...
29th is when Stephen, Scott will be gone for the ARP seminar.
Oh, that's correct, yes, yes.
And Scott's gone 23rd, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th to Congress, right?
Yeah, are you talking...
What day of the week is the 28th?
What about the week of the 13th? And that's three weeks.
I can do Monday or Tuesday. I just can't do Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. But I could do Monday or Tuesday of that week.
You can do a Tuesday after the commissioner's meeting.
Do you want to have a special meeting right after the commissioner's meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
We're here anyway.
Well, why don't we just do it, have an extra long commissioner's meeting instead of scheduling another separate?
All right, that's fine.
Agreed.
In discussion.
So it's September 14th?
Schedule it until like noon.
September 14th?
On the 14th. Amy, does that give you enough time?
That's a week.
Because if we have our scores to you by the 8th, you have less than a week.
I mean, I'll start looking now, just so that I'll be prepared to...
Apply?
Apply to your scores.
Okay.
And somebody's giving us a packet of score sheets, or you said?
Yes. Originally, I was going to go through those and try to suggest yes or no on applicability, and that's why I'd ask the question, because I had not yet done that.
I think there are some that are definitely a yes and some that are definitely a no. I think those...
I think that would be helpful on the score sheet.
Right.
Those ones that where we have to do a deeper dive, I think we can just leave those blank.
If you know it's a definite no, I think that's very helpful on the score sheet.
Oh, I'd agree.
And for example, these are costs forward. So if somebody, you know, in essence is asking for something to reimburse them from prior expenses, that was ineligible. And that's one of the reasons why, for example, the health department removed their request. They realized in a deeper dive of their own, it was not eligible.
I thought they were also getting some other grant access.
That is accurate, too, for their continued tracing.
Right, okay.
Well, between you and Rhonda and whoever else participated in the binders, they were very organized and...
Yeah, really good.
Yes, thank you.
Helpful.
And you'll also, sorry, you'll also make sure that we've got clarity regarding the reimbursement, regarding the broadband, if we end up, I guess, or a payback, whatever it is, whether that's eligible or not.
We'd like to know the answer to that question. I'm attending, September 8, actually, a conference in North Canton to try to help understand that.
Okay.
But it's still, I mean, we could still potentially do it with just not...
Frankly, that does affect my scoring. We get paid back.
Yeah, that goes up.
Sorry. I'm just saying, it's like, okay.
It's revenue replacement.
Yeah, it's, okay. It kind of, then it just reduces the total you're allocating.
But in our minds and our scoring, too, for this year, you know, you do shoot for, okay, now, we used to have 17.5 in mind, now it's 15 and change in mind. That's important.
So let me ask another question. Are you gone on the 7th?
Of September.
September 7?
Yeah.
And you're here on September 7?
Where is I now?
It's a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a Tuesday after Labor Day?
Yeah, why? What's going on that day?
Well, I'm planning that I may not be here that day.
Oh, no, I am here.
So I want to make sure you two are here.
I always email you guys. I only told, I only gave you one Tuesday this year.
Okay.
And I'll probably get canceled again, so, but I did give it to you.
And you're gone that day?
Because the General Assembly, we can't do a remote.
Right.
You're gone the 29th of November, too?
No, the 7th.
Oh, the 7th.
Okay.
I'm gone that whole week.
Okay.
All right. Do we have anything else?
In the meantime, we can certainly meet with both of you to go over our scoring and clarifications on the projects.
Any questions, and I would be happy to reach back to any of the applicants if there's a point of clarity that needs to be made.
So going forward, you're going to mark the projects that qualify, mark the projects that don't qualify, and then give us each those 25 score sheets?
Yes.
And anticipation on when we would get those?
That's the magic question.
I'm not locking you down, like, but roughly?
Ideally, I could have those prepared for you right now later than, you know, Tuesday when you arrive for commissioner's meeting.
Perfect.
Did I miss the one on the USA pickleball ambassador? Never mind.
You know, they came to the office, and they're very passionate about, you know, physicality, overall health, mental health. But it is something they specifically, I believe, want to build in Medina City, so I suggested to them that they also apply in Medina City. So I'm not sure that they did, but I did make that suggestion.
Yeah. That makes sense, actually, since Medina City did get an allocation.
Right, fairly significant.
Good science, one, so.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Go ahead, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swenick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
You know what? This was very interesting. The whole process was interesting.
I think the interesting part...